Please rise. Class me. My congratulations to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, in the central, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call. Ms. Allen.
Here.
Ms. Jarvis.
Here.
Ms. Grant Nopless.
Here.
Ms. Rob Scott.
Here.
Ms. Donovan.
Here.
Ms. Keaton's absent. Ms. I'm curious.
Present.
Ms. Bono.
Here.
Happy with notice of this meeting as been provided by the following meeting. Happy you will notice was sent to the Herald and News director at the South Bergenite, the Observer captured, posted in the lobby of the town hall for office setting forthcoming scheduled work meetings and public meeting of the board. Budgets? Presentation. Scott has a detailed presentation of the budget that he's going to be putting up on the screen. We would appreciate your opening your questions until the end, and he will answer any questions that you have concerning the budget. Everyone see the light? Everybody ready? Welcome to the Winter School District 2018-19 Budget Presentation. I'll cover 18-19 budget and the deficits that we have so far, okay? So, let me see. Alright, board conjectures for tonight's presentation. I'll review the budget principles. I'll review the 2018-19 highlights. I'll budget the cost-saving measures we had in place. I'll cover district expenditures. I'll cover the district revenues. I'll cover tax implications. And I'll cover the current deficit calculations. And as you can see by my slide is school year 16, 17, and I'll introduce school year 17, 18. Now remember, the deficits from 16, 17, and 17, 18 were kind of built up before I finally uncovered what's going on, okay? So if you've known on for a while, and now we have back behind the order, then I can now put out the numbers, okay? Any questions over? Now who are basic budgeting guidelines that we must follow as a district? I'll go through them now. Continue excellence of letters for the school district. Maintain and continue focus on teaching, learning to empower school community and placing healthy resources where they have the greatest impact on classroom learning while maintaining fiscal responsibility. That's the goal of the board meeting, okay? Now establishing the 18-19 budget. When I first came in, I'd go for 16, 17, 17, 18, and then get a true 18-19 budget. The budget is now fully put out. Now he approved it, I've lost record of it in-house and will be ordered, so I know the numbers are correct moving forward to next year's budget, okay? So, review required expenditures. Line one. Review debt service schedules. Review faculty and staff salaries. Review the federal, state mandated regulations that apply to the budget. The war for fixed costs, heat, electric, sewer extension. Review the health benefits. The war for mandated professional service that are required for the district. Onboarding building maintenance. We have risk management, asking insurance appropriate to the district. We have food service operations. And we have a whole referendum soft cost. Helped up as we needed to refer, okay? Now, if we put the board together, I started going through ways to start reducing costs in the district. There are a couple things that we want to to help cut the cost for the district. First one is South Bergen Jordan Commission. We have knee rate educational consortium that's purchased group used and they give us a percentage back, well, we still haven't got a percentage back at once. We have midnight at the high services and a large group for bicycle supply to save money. We have Pelosex Regional Educational Services, another purchasing group. We have a storage fund for property liability. As no large group we belong to, the cost. We have the Huntington County ESC co-op purchasing as something new and bringing into the district for next year to buy supplies. And then of course we have the shared social network with Winter School. So all that helps us save money in the district. Now, this is the revenue for the 18-19 budget. Tax levy is thirty-eight million, thirty-nine thousand, six forty-eight. That's proved out number. Everything that's on this budget is in the financial software. Maybe the system three thousand, so line by line. Every cost is in there, right, right, okay? Sign. Transportation fee, that's the chump facility. We're in year three, and it is a year three of a five-year contract. They pay us seventy thousand dollars a year to plus. After the fifth year, that contract expires, and that cost is incurred by the district. Now twenty-seven, okay? Next, tuition on the government sources is hundred twenty-seven thousand, six forty-two. Yeah, state aid is two million, four hundred and eighty-three thousand, five forty-eight. You have one twenty, that's the federal, state grants. That's a million, fifty-eight thousand, nine oh four. This place revenue was three thousand, what we get from local resources. That is sixty-three thousand, seven eighty-four. You have available sources, that's the Medicaid reimbursement, the thirty-nine thousand, three sixteen. The debt service tax levy is six hundred forty-nine thousand, six twenty-two. And the total revenue for next year's budget is forty-two thousand, five thirty-five, four sixty-four, okay? What happened in the past is, they didn't stick to the revenue side. So they wanted spending more money than they brought in, and that's how we know the deficit, okay? Going further into 18-19, I'll bring the proof of that to sit in the software and we'll stick to it, okay? Now, here is the slide that kind of breaks out the tax levy to these residents in the district. Up top is the current tax levy for 17, 18. It was forty-one million, seven nineteen, seven oh nine. Current budget going into 18-19, which was approved, is forty-two thousand, five thirty-five, four sixty-four. The tax revenue from 17, 18 was thirty-six thousand, eight sixty, five seven nine. The tax revenue for 2018-19 is thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine, six forty-eight million, sorry. That gives you an increase of three point two percent. Now, state law is like an increase of about two percent. The one point two percent over is the ability to take us all the healthcare adjustment to offset the expensive healthcare costs of that. So that's what that one point two percent is giving, three point two, okay? That offsets all the healthcare costs to some point. Now, if you house by that three hundred twelve thousand, eight ninety-eight, your tax on annual basis is a hundred and eighty-five dollars a week for census per family. Now, let me kind of explain on this one, it comes up where every dollar goes that we pull in from the tax line. The first one is ten percent goes to the school operations. Fourteen percent goes towards school supplies. Seventeen point five percent goes to special education and the support services provided for the district. Nineteen point five is the health benefits for the district. And then thirty-nine percent goes to salaries. So that's kind of a condensed slide on where every dollar we pulled in from revenue, how it's spent in the budget by category. The instructions on this slide, I try to make it as easier to get into it to read. Thanks for listening. Now, let us board the bed. What we do for our students and for the district to talk. We create critical thinkers. We create collaborators. We create creators, of course. Communicators. And of course, very passionate students in the district. So we try to prepare our students for today to lead for tomorrow. That's the goal of the district. Get our students ready, so they walk out the doors, go to college, work over, and go to work at the school, and then progress from there. Now, let me review the 16, 17 budget deficit breakdown. Kind of refresh the most memory if I go forward. We wanted my name for school year 16, 17. We have a deficit of one million, hundred fifteen thousand, three eighty-seven. And that deficit just didn't happen overnight. It was kind of a buildup from the year, from the school year fourteen, fifteen. And what was going on in the budget is that the business office in the district was pulling from the fund balance chief chair, moving it forward to maintain its expenses. And also helps us on the tax base, the cost. And to do that, we drain all the fund balances. The bill that has nothing to cut, so you don't lose the deficit. That wasn't done. So, internal orderly control procedures, required divisions, the voice of expenditures, have done that, that's now set in place for 18-19. Review financial plan and recommend modifications moving forward. As has been done over the current board, and myself moving forward. So the 18-19 budget is a true factual budget. Now, what happened in 16, 17 was, the business office, the LA retro amount that was set aside in that budget was spent to pay bills from that year. It should have brought forward to pay bills, to pay the bill for the retro not recommended inside in 17-18. That should have brought forward in the budget, but spent in 16-17. Paid it off, okay? Next. When you do that, you have to get county approval. Any fund transfer into fund balance, that's what we call it, above ten percent, you need county approval. That wasn't done. But if the county knew about it, they would have all that. They weren't told about it. That's the problem. That's been required moving forward, county, but that was going on in the past. It's not getting approved in time. They think they don't have a percentage by any proof. There's no way around it, because you don't know about it. Okay, next. Our food service, we have to add up the project and enterprise cost. Right now it's a deficit. It was underfunded. Now, the transportation for resident student, they call it teacher's projections over the past little years prior to my arrival, it wasn't done correctly. So naturally, even losing revenue was a mistake that you could have obtained. Moving forward is corrected, we're getting every dollar returned from the state. And here's the big reason why. You use our theory classifications of the purchase orders. Those are expenses that you incurred after you put into the system. The problem was, all the expenses weren't recorded in the right year. And after 16, 17, they incurred the expenses, and took them off the system and brought them into 17, 18. Can't do that. That's kind of, it's a county issue that's been corrected, can't do it. Okay, you gotta keep it the same way, you're hearing it, can't bring it forward. If you hold the POs, bring that expense forward, but it's charged at the front here. That wasn't done, okay? And all of this was done behind the scenes. So the board might not have heard of the whole thing now, but still, in the business office. But since I've been here, it remains transparent. I'm trying to keep it that way, it's everything I do. They all know, it's all a business, okay? Next one. Now, here comes what I uncovered from the 17, 18 budget. What happened was, I had the old auditor trying to do a bunch of projection. It just wasn't coming out right with my eyes and numbers I'll get. It didn't make sense between the software I had and what he was telling me, so I sit up there with county VA, did his budget projections. Said the county VA approved my point that it wasn't right, and what we all tracked wasn't right. So he got me leaving. I go to the orderly firm, clerk of his days. This was here tonight to support me if I needed. I'll find out this year, okay? This year's deficit is two million, three hundred sixty-seven thousand, seven eighty-six. That's this year. Once again, it was all off the county issues, so that wasn't correctly. So when I saw they dig through it, from across it, I didn't wait for the full audit to be done before I could announce it. That was about two weeks ago, so now it's announced, okay? Next. One thing that's positive is, I established a financial plan that is solid and sound for 18-19. Next year will not be in deficit, I can guarantee that. Now, this year's budget, the food service enterprise was underbudgeted by thirty thousand dollars. That should not happen, but it did. Next one. The pre-k program was underbudgeted by seventy thousand dollars. So saying that, what do you think's gonna happen from January or next year? High degrees presence, again, do a nap, because it will not, January, not be valued like that. It's the only thing to prove, because on one another, the deficit is creeping. Next. Now, here's where the big issue was. The estimated cost of the district self-help program is underbudgeted by one million, three hundred fifty-five thousand, twenty ten dollars. That's the bulk of the deficit. What happened was, in July, the business office, who held my seat at the time, went into this year's budget, pulled out the money to pay the last year's bills. That's way out of deficit, okay? Next. The LA retro was not budgeted for this year, so it was mostly paid out of last year's budget. So when that money was spent for last year's budget, guess what happens this year? It's got a commercentious budget. And that was four hundred seventy-six thousand and nine dollars. That also commercentious budget, so it was spent last year. Can't do that, but it was done, okay? Next. Then from the rest of the twenty-nine lines, the other lines have more budgeting effectively. It's going up four hundred thirty-six thousand, four sixty-seven. That's all proven up on the order I have now. That's a train meeting from the last position, so I'm sorry, I'm trying to turn it this way. Okay, next. Now, also that interstitial with the OFAC. That happened in fourteen, fifteen, with three hundred one thousand, two twenty-four. Okay, that number is in the deficit on top of the next slide, perfectly reasonable, okay? Now, here are the actual concise deficit listings. Now I've kind of been working through them. First one is 16, 17. One million, one fifteen, three eighty-seven. The amounts suggest accounting issues at the business office. It wasn't done by protocol, by the general county principals. And initial I found out was, the district wasn't having regularly finance meetings. Well, first thing I did was establish finance meetings once a month. For the most part, I had them every week, but after work it proved out. And we dropped after once a month, but that's what's going on on the budget. So that's why I had this county need finance meetings. We need all community, all over the place going forward. Next one. This year's school deficit in 17-18 is two million, three sixty-seven, seven eighty-six. And I just went through why it happened, okay? Now, the OFAC, that now is included, so it's three hundred one thousand, two twenty-four. So the entire deficit for the last two years, 16, 17, 17, 18, is? Yes. Is three million, seven eighty-four, three ninety-seven. That's the two-year deficit as of right now. And a lot of that was kind of triple decked fourteen, fifteen on this by not having perfected accounting principle and not having checked the balances at my office, okay? That's where it starts. Now, to watch the board, it starts with my office.
I have to ask you, that that as of right now?
Right now.
The number is one point five, that's three point seven.
That number should go up? At this point, it's probably going to fall down, we hope. Okay. Could it go up? Just a few moments. I don't think so. Guess what happened? When I came here in September, I knew there was an issue with the budget from this year. So October first, I froze every line in the budget. No money is spent on, well, it was the catch required, and what we needed for the students. That we do. Everything else was frozen. Although they're in a saving issue, and I make comparisons to the building, that had to be done, everything else was frozen. I kept money aside to pay for the academic instruction, whatever class, sort of class rates were required by the curriculum, all that was done. But anything else outside of that, mine was frozen, okay? That's how I was able to stop bleeding from the budget, by just freezing all the lines and keep that money taxed every year, okay? Any questions on this? This is the two years, 16, 17, and the current year of 17, okay?
Oh, what's fine, and so happening after the quarter, 15, 16, 17, 18, right?
Yes.
So that could eventually, because people who were running this, they know they're good, but they won't do it every day, because they're improving it. Who's working it, so we could even bigger haul?
I'm hoping that doesn't happen, but that's always a possibility.
And our meeting, this is stable, the county department, the county Alphac, are you like that? Are they in the Alphac meeting, however, when it's here, because of the deficit that we have here?
I can't answer that, I don't know. Well, I know the fact that supporting fifteen is out there, and we've got lines back, and that's the one. Now, we do have some positive things to bear to the district on the head of our deficit, which is negative. Closing remarks. School year budget for 18-19 was approved by the county, and they pushed it through the register, they didn't have budget approved. They want to hold it back up. And I'm like, I put the cash, why was this done far? Where, why was it now? That's the way to bring that supply. I know, my budget 18-19 was approved by the county, and I had all the power. But not the paperwork, right? Because we're doing it on the road, okay? Next. The school year 18-19 budget does have a lot to begin paying back our debt. I did know that is the budget. They have funds set aside to start paying back our debt, okay? The first thing I did was go through it, put aside what it means for that cost, and that's put aside, move funding for that, that can begin to start going back, okay? Next. The current financial condition will not impact the current referendum progression. That's a whole separate fund. That's referendum fund, separate account, and it all stands by itself, okay? So this is what's going on now, the district, it doesn't affect that part of it, okay? Now, just so you know, phase one renovations won't begin in June. As soon as school lets out, we're gonna start renovating the high school. That's already set. Contract will be approved tonight. We'll start the summer school, at least it's June twenty-second. We'll begin the next day, and we'll start working, okay? Now, since we have a deficit of three point seven million, if that happened, I'm required, and I request to get a state monitor. Because now I have to borrow money from the state to pay back that debt. So in June, we're gonna get a state monitor that will oversee the finances to make sure what I'm doing is above par, it's all transparent, and you're over there. So what happens is, I'll borrow money from the state for a ten-year, no interest loan, and pay back that debt. So we get the money in July, pay up all our debt, and I pay back that loan in the next ten years, no interest loan. That's how it works. But doing that, you get a state monitor. If you don't, the state's got the state's money. I want to make sure you follow, oversee these correctly. That's what's gonna happen, okay?
Do you think how they're going to be monitoring, and that's gonna, you know? Do they not get stable?
You really can't, because that's already proved out, you guys know that. Anything for that has come from the state level, they're not gonna do state monitoring.
So, if we pay, I mean, so there's a question. If we pay off that, and your monitors are out, they're here a couple of times, anyway?
No, they usually come in for two to three years, maybe four. Once they realize that they're now physically, physically stable, they need to back off, and they give them spot checks. But you figure for at least two to three years, they've got a monitor here overseeing the finances. That's how it works. Once you prove that pattern, if they write, if they follow rules correctly, and then go compliment, you could move it forward, right place, they'll back off. But that's up to the monitor, how it works, okay? Next one. Okay, now, any questions for me? Or, okay? Alright, alright, I'll look. I'll drop the projector, let the board get back up on their seats, then you can ask the way, okay? Okay, anyone have any general questions for Scott, Mr. Visser? Yes, Scott? Scott? Yeah?
I have a few, my voice is a little loud, so apologize. First, I'd like to thank all Mr. Visser's representation and the board members for working on. I have to like to go on, by the time we're not by the case. Um, you said that no one be allowed. My question is, why was it allowed on birthdays? Actually, not really, bring it around, what? You said if no one be allowed anything actually going forward, why was no one allowed on birthdays that these things can happen? I don't understand. I don't get what the, what the process is. But you're going to be very thorough process, make sure all this stuff is prepared. What happened before this?
I'm gonna tell you exactly what happened, guys. When all of this started taking place, and I have to say that, on the board, we didn't catch this, what was going on, because we never had meetings. We had committees, but there were never any meetings called with those committees. When Mr. Visser came on, the first thing we did was start finance committee meetings, okay? Well, there we go.
I mean, I think it's just important to say too, just like you teach science, and a colleague teaches English, and a colleague teaches math, right? And your, your kids take all of their disciplines, and they blend them, and they apply their learning. It's very similar to, to a central office. A district cannot run without a superintendent for a debt. A district cannot run without a school business administrator for a debt. That's law. And that's because each person is trained very differently. Now, what ultimately happens is, when one of those people is no longer present or is moving on, and you're preparing for a transition, you now have to start, just like as a teacher, you cover for a teacher, you now start covering for that position. So, when we had a transition in that office, and I knew that transition was happening, my immediate response was now to be mirrored on everything. So now everything shifts offices. So what would have come through the business administrators' office now comes through superintendent's office. And now, you're exposed to seeing things that you didn't see before. And it really just sparks a lot of questions, a lot of inquiry, a lot of wonder. That's all it was. It was not my area of expertise, but it was wonder. And after we started wondering why I was being asked to sign POs in July that were paying tuitions in February, and why when I laid out all those POs on my dining table, the lines were coming from health insurance benefits. It, it just didn't make sense. And that was when, once Scott came on, we were able to identify what, what was in fact occurring.
So going back to what you said, who was responsible for all these financial things? Like who would have been? Who, like who would have been the VA? Who, who was the person who would have said, oh, every month, every two months?
The process should work as a school business administrator's. You talk to the board, and endure due diligence as the VA, set up finance meetings, and keep the board members abreast of what's going on financially. So there's no
the board members abreast of what's going on financially, so there's no surprises. You're trying to keep everything transparent as you can. So when I came in, I read that there were never any finance meetings, how is that possible? So the first thing I did was resolution, one funding between us. To keep everything transparent, the board knows what I'm covering, so as we move forward, this whole deficit will never happen again, not longer. Okay? That's the problem.
My next question is actually people like, food service was $3,000 from the one over the pre-K, it's $7,100?
I...
Would you not call 100% or where?
Okay, I can probably speak to the pre-K. Unless you want to do that, but I can speak to the pre-K. When we took over the pre-K program, it was run by the recreation department. Okay? And they were paying, at the time, their teachers, half of what we had to pay once we took over the program. Okay? Not taking that into consideration, or thinking about that, add that benefits, which the recreation department never paid benefits, and doubling the teacher's salary, that's where we came into the deficit on it. Okay? Next.
What percentage of the tax bill is going to go back? Did you guys have, it was like 196, I think, except for household?
193.
193. What percentage of that is going back to the deficit?
To pay the debt?
Pay the student's salary for that.
None of them. It's all built in.
So the amount that you're seeing, the amount that you're seeing for the 18, 19 budget has a chunk of it designed and allotted simply for debt payback.
Do you guys know how many teachers were let go? Even if it's temporary, I don't remember on that, but...
I don't think, we haven't found that out as a board yet.
Are we currently, I mean, the actual...
No, we haven't found that as a board yet. Miss, miss, the morning.
I don't understand.
The number of non-tenures who were in the...
They, no, they, no, they, let's clarify this, let's be very, very clear on this, this is super important. Anyone who is non-tenure, or was part-time or hourly, received a very clear letter stating that as of April, they could not be renewed, because this hadn't happened yet. So do not legally renew teachers, or promise any faculty or staff jobs, until you know the county has approved your budget for next year. Now that this has happened, majority, a vast plethora of majority of those people will be given their assignments for next year. At the same time, in alignment with the slides that were proposed, there will be, in some situations, part-time positions that are no longer offered, but full-time faculty positions with benefits that are then satisfying those positions. So to tell you honestly, right now, to give you a specific number, it would be unfair, because we still have the opportunity, with the time that we have left, for potential retirements, for potential shifts, which means we could bring back. But, you know, overall, it is a very small percentage of positions that unfortunately were a true reduction in force, that will result in those, in not bringing back those staff. And if you go back to the March meeting, I really tried to take the bull by the horns, and present honestly and with transparency, the positions that we did in fact have to cut, and that would be cut, and we spoke about the supervisors, we spoke about elementary counselor, we spoke about some, you know, two assistant coaches, et cetera. So those positions were true reductions in force.
Okay. I know Mr. Visser mentioned that the new accounting firm is here, what about the old accounting firm? Are they to be held responsible for any of this?
That's not...
Any of this?
That's not, it's an ongoing discussion with our board attorneys to see what we can do, if any.
Thank you very much.
Michael, did you take your name up there?
Yes.
Yeah, were there any more general questions for Scott?
None, so you're okay, Scott.
Hi, I think my name is Sarah.
Sarah, yes.
So in that regard, I'm trying to say, I would just like to know, are you going to make this presentation available online, on your board education site? Yes, okay. The other, I just have a few questions. I did, maybe for Jackson, any position that we need to cover, because I was interested in pulling out, I'll wait for that for a little bit, so especially about maybe. And then, so we were talking about who takes part in finance meeting, you talked about who can do this finance meeting, so who exactly takes part in those finance meetings?
There, right now, there's a committee of four. Ms. Andrewopoulos is the chair, Ms. Agarscato, Sherry, and Josephine are the four members on the finance committee as of now.
Okay, and Mr. Byssett, do you like explaining what the health, I know that there's a 2% cap, and this went over about 3, it went over by 1.2.
Correct.
Do you mind explaining how that difference is covered?
What happens is, with healthcare costs, you allow a ratio that you submit to the county, they approve it, they call a healthcare adjustment. In our case, I would allow a 1.2% adjustment, so I'm 400,000, $40,000 adjustment, that I can add to the budget, offset the healthcare, and that's where that comes from. And that's, goes out to the taxpayers to help cover the rising healthcare costs of the district. Every school district has the same option if they qualify for it, that's how we did it.
I'll be, that's it, thank you so much.
I think that's it. We have one more. Mr. Colson?
I'm a couple years, my mouth is lower than the others.
Uh, agreed.
Well, that's what Dari said, I was going to ask the same question. Is the business administrator and the interim superintendent that was involved in the current year where we have a problem, they're not responsible whatsoever for anything?
They, they really, there was no, there was no time for that, there was no money taken. It's just, I guess, bad accounting, that there's nothing, no chargeable offenses that could happen, I don't think. I mean, we have, we have an attorney that can answer it.
Hi, I can tell you that we have made a claim to support some insurance carrier for what happened during that period of time, but other than that, we can't discuss any legal strategies or legal actions we might be taking against any prior employees, prior professionals. Once everything is settled, we will let the public know, but right now, we can't discuss that publicly.
You know, going back to that year, so I kind of went up to the board and visited these, and I said, why are work meetings no longer open to the public? And the response was, we don't have to, because we all agree. Well, apparently, the board didn't know that they were agreeing to things that, and I think it's because there's nobody really involved to know what's going on. Now, I've asked for work meetings, and the work sessions are always closed, always committed to ask questions. Well, I'm not going to commit to ask questions, I have no idea that there's anything going on, but if the public is invited to a work meeting, and to hear that there's things going on, and their opinions, whether they're for or against, because when we come to the meeting, everybody goes, yes, which is their prerogative, but possibly in a work meeting, if there is a work meeting, but apparently there's not, except for truth, there's no work meetings?
We have executive, we have executive meetings where the work is done, and I guess because of you, it is now open to the public. So the first time, once we start the meeting, it's open to the public, but when we go back, an executive session, talking about personnel or anything private, of course, you can't approve it.
That's right, because, I'm going to shampoo, the problem is, is what I'm saying is, like the agenda that comes out, and the financial, the schooling, the activities, et cetera, et cetera. It's ready, done, and over with, and they vote on it, and you haven't discussed that in work sessions, because the only thing in the work session could be litigation or personnel. So when are you actually voting on that? Like, when is Joe saying, well, I disagree with what's on here? When, when is that discussed by the board?
The board can discuss it anytime they want, we can discuss it when it comes up here, but if everybody's saying yes, then there's no discussion. I mean, if somebody had a problem...
You can't vote meetings, why, you know, done at work meetings.
We, yes, because the work meetings was combined with the main meeting, and we should discuss that.
Now, you had several meetings also, you used to have, you know, I heard...
Well, yeah, you're right, we did. And at that point, we would discuss that, right? And we had two meetings, one public, both public, one a work session and one a public session.
The work session is open to the public.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
That's your discussion, yeah. But here, I'm not quite sure what you guys are voting on, stuff that's on your agenda outside of...
We're only going to hear public, when we do, we're voting on it. Though, the board members can talk about it, if they have a problem with whatever, at this meeting now.
Because nobody ever does.
Well, that just so happens that nobody ever does. Once in a while, Jimmy has, as I will say, and Aaron, I noticed, has talked about things at the public meeting, you know? If they don't have anything to say, then it's a yes, and we go on. I mean, you're right, we did have a separate meeting, but it depends on what the board wants to do.
Since 17, it was always a work meeting. Always studied, when the one superintendent left, we got an interim in, and we talked to that interim, he said, we don't have to have work meetings.
No, we don't, we don't have to happen, but...
But we had before, I could look back 30, since 17.
Since, since, where it's been.
Sorry, I know it's not great, because I know, but seriously, there's always, the transparency is what I'm saying, is not there anymore. And I'm quite disappointed with that. One more question. Before we have to hear, this year, we had zero budget for it. Why would we pay $3,000 next year? That's what we did.
I'm just asking, John, that's the wish, the wish.
I have a few, you know? We never, we never had any money for this, the previous before we got this air program. All right, that's, thank you.
My name is Linda Sasek, I just want to work on the staff on the board permission. I compare the RTR to the board, and I send to each division for vacation. Does that be ever included? Like, I provided what, and our money should use in the report. Was that not, uh, included too?
For the past, I'm guessing not, I can only say what I found, before it was directed.
Yeah, that's...
If you should get in a microphone.
Now that it's being done correctly, and you will do the RTR right now?
Correct.
That will give us, it should give us, as a sample. Oh, that, that should be...
Absolutely, considering that happens.
Okay, because that's, I did this once, I, I know.
There was, there was, when, when the audit was, was being done this year, and that was one of the questions that was presented, where is the money coming for the students that fit, that are in residences, that fit this category? And when it was told that the district had never put in for that, that we had never sought that, that was, that was huge, that was a big question, because that was pervasive. And, you know, yeah, and there is no going back on that for one year, for multiple years, but it's, it really is basic. I mean, if there are no sidewalks, if it's a hazardous pathway to school, that's automatic, that money comes back. So unfortunately, that was never sought before, but moving forward now, it is.
Yeah, when I got here in September, I realized...
I started here in September 14th of the, of the 18, or 17, actually. When I realized that, I had a way to the audit, started Q and A, and that's what I started to do. And we got to the bottom, we corrected it internally how it should be being done, so going forward is done correctly.
I know that, yes, with that little issues, I understand that. I really hope that something can be done, because that should have been quite important of all time, though. We have this image right of us, and it's costing me this much money, and we pay Bush, we pay me, I fulfill, I build, we know. So the fact that we get money from the state for that, I'm telling you that that's outrageous, honestly.
Well, I can, if you read our CAF reports for the last seven years, I went through each one for the last seven years, trying to find out any recommendations or violations in the audit. There were zero for the last seven years. Not a recommendation, not a violation, nothing stated about it.
Yeah, every audit we saw was, no problems.
Perfect.
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 That's what the board of ed saw.
So, right, so I went through that, those CAFs right away, it's a red flag, because you never have a perfect audit, there's always some sort of recommendation. Might have any violations, but there's always a recommendation, no one's ever been perfect. There was zero for seven years. How's that possible? That's a red flag to be, so I started digging into the books, and it's going to come up.
I just, you know, just my experience here in the city, and I was looking to this, and the TRTR, my, my, just fully done to... I did that for 25 years, as you know, I should not understand that. That would be important, that is so much money. Thank you for your attention.
Mrs. Donovan, you got a question? Oh, wait, we have no damn lady.
Wait, the camp, the audit you just spoke about, was that our private audit, or that's the county audit? Like, was the camp, okay.
It was a private one.
The private one, with no recommendations, and...
None, zero.
With that information, that's how the county rubber stamped and said, here you go for your next budget?
Correct.
So we fired this auditing firm, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and we can't talk about it, but we're looking into our rights, is what we can do in regards to...
We have our new order here tonight.
Okay, fantastic, all right, so then...
Your hand.
At any point, though, are we, I know we can't talk about what we told, but is there any ramifications that the county is going to be forced to give us money back because they didn't ask for backup? Like, remember when you were hearing your presentation, you said you would require to give backup? How, who, who went ahead and did all these budgets and approved them by the county, never asked for the paperwork or backup? Or there has to be somebody...
I'll end up, I'll end up to the attorney, that's a great question.
I assure you, we are looking down every possible avenue to get the money back that it deserves. We cannot guarantee that anybody will come back, we just want to make sure that if there's a way, we will find it for you.
Okay, great, great. Because of the OFAC issues that we had with 2014, 15, are we going to pay our new workers to constantly go through, and since we're asking for money from the state and getting the monitor, to make sure that we are on pace, and that we're not going to be a bigger hole again? Because if you go, on the average, we lost $300,000 from 2014, 2015 fiscal year, who's to say it's another $300 for the next rate after that? So that's another million dollars. So while we have a handout, I can assure you, I can assure you, that practices have changed, at least in the last two years. So we had people handling those, those accounts that were very knowledgeable, very trained. The switch over to ESSA was another huge training component, which adapted our, our accounting for those, you know, for those. I can't speak with complete certainty for the years in between, but I can tell you that many of our practices changed organically, despite, or, and that was not in response to receiving the OFAC, they changed way earlier to this. 2016, 2017, 2018, so 2015, 16, could still be unassured? It's possible, it's possible, yes, anything's possible. Okay, whoever was in charge of the Title I program, because that's a few were a lot of problems for, has it, Zephyr's no longer in charge of that? So it's, it's, we have to be, I want to be very, very careful here, I want to be very, very careful. Because even though you have someone in charge of special education Title I funding, that money is still part of the school's funding, and it is still ultimately managed with the oversight of the school business administrator.
and it is still ultimately managed with the oversight of the school business administrator. So we can't just say that monies that were perhaps, um, not spent with best practices, and they fall into the realm of special education or Title I funds, that, that goes on the ownership of the person in charge of Title I. That person is working in conjunction with the school business administrator to make the best decisions and use that money under the realm that the school business administrator knows exactly.
They needed to meet with each other.
Absolutely.
And that didn't happen, because it looked like when you reached OFAC, it looked like something was asking for forgiveness instead of permission, because several large ticket items were people being hired, who were, uh, being hired for Title I schools, correct? I could be mistaken, but that's the way I would try to think, like, four or five people lining with salary.
So, it, it, it's very complex. Title, Title I funds must go above and beyond what the district naturally does. So if you are providing, for example, I'm speaking hypothetically here, if you are providing remedial instruction in all of your schools, you cannot then use Title I funds simply for those schools that get Title I funding, because you're, you've supplanted it, that's what the term supplanting is, you're doing it across your district for everyone. So now, what are you doing to go above and beyond for the Title I students? That is what you can use your Title I funds for. So, if you have a system whereby you are providing remedial instruction only at your Title I funded schools, then the Title I monies can be used for those teachers. But you can't have a type of legal teacher in every school and say the ones who get Title I funding are going to get paid their salaries from that money, because you've supplanted it. So that's, you know, that's where you saw those teachers and some monies were used for, you know, teachers, that it was, it was a supplanted service.
Mr. Donovan, you got a question?
Yeah, I got a question for Scott. In the, uh, the proposed budget for 18, 19, uh, employee benefits function 291, you had 7.8 million dollars. That is a assumption of going forward, what do you think it's going to cost? In there, is there, what percentage of that is health benefits?
$5 million, that is pretty much health benefits.
$5 million?
Correct. That's just, that, $5 million is just the healthcare, you know, the health insurance. Then you have, and that, you're going to have prescription, you're going to have dental, that's so.
Got you. Now, estimated cost for one of the reasons of the deficit breakdown is a miscalculation of being self-insured on the health insurance side of 1.3 million dollars.
Correct.
Right? Are we still going to be self-insured going forward into the 2015, 2019, when it shows when we are self-insured, it's going to cost us a lot in a month?
If I get my way, and know what's going on now, and I'm off and on repeat to look at it, I have four responses back for insurance brokers. I can't do much about 18, 19 with self-insurance, but heading into 19, 20, if I can afford to change it, I'm going to go towards fully insured. If I can price out which one's cheaper to go, I'm anticipating full insurance would be better, but I will know, do I get to do?
When you, not talking about a board coming in, it's the, when is expiration of this current claim at some place that we're self-insuring?
It just got renewed for another year, so it's...
When?
Back in February.
Correct. And were we aware of this cost back in February? This miscalculation back in February?
No, I don't, I couldn't prove that, I had suspicions, but I couldn't prove that, I'll wait until the audit gets done. Right, it also had two catastrophes, too.
Yeah, but catastrophic is different than health insurance, when it comes to, if that's, I'm talking employee benefits, because the, the main cause here that was miscalculated back in 2017, 18, was that 1.3 million dollars.
Well, that 1.3 million that was pulled out was due in fact to the full fund of healthcare money to pay last year's bills, that's why.
That was spent before this new year started. We started that much money down in that line.
And there was no comparison of going to, when it was renewed in February, uh, on, on this year, there was no comparison of maybe we could save money by going to a traditional HMO plan, whatever is out there.
You can't do it at that point.
No?
No, besides, to do that, we have to then pay off the back end of that self-insurance, which we couldn't afford anyways, everybody didn't do it. But what happened was, in July, the maintenance office, who held my spot, went into the budget, pulled out the funds of healthcare money to pay last year's bills, did a 201.3 million change. Can't do that, that's done. So that already set. So right now, I look at the budget, I'm out, cash, my budget's gone. And I had to pay up a 40,000 direct note that came out, and there's your 200 right there, just in those two spots. And the other various lines add it all up, that's what happened. And I was low down prior to beginning.
So employee benefits estimate is going to be 7.3 million for 2018. And that's including full frame, which adds strictly for employee benefits plus income, kind of like district, regular coverage for self-insurements, correct?
Go back to the agenda. Finance and facility. Chris?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of finance facilities and district planning committee may so indicate now that a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. There is none, and make a recommendation that we approve item one.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Malick.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Adrianopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Abuskado.
Four.
Ms. DeGruel.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
Three.
Four.
Ms. Keith is up. Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Ms. Vona.
Four.
Following the rules and regulations, any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of policy and the rules and regulations committee may so indicate now that a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. There is none, and make a recommendation that we approve item one.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Malick.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Adrianopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Abuskado.
Four.
Ms. DeGruel.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Keith is up. Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Ms. Vona.
Four.
Uh, new business. Yes, two, one, two, five.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following actions listed under the category of new business may so indicate now that a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. I make a motion that one to five be accepted as read.
Roll call.
Ms. Malick.
Four.
Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Adrianopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Abuskado.
Four.
Ms. DeGruel.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
Uh, question on number two, that's, uh, for the, uh, referendum, is it correct?
That's correct.
Okay, four. Uh, one, two, five.
Ms. Keith is up. Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Ms. Vona.
Four.
Number six, be resolved that the reputation of the Linners Board of Education approved the contract of employment between it and Anthony Greco for the position of superintendent of schools, pending the approval of the contract of employment by the executive captain superintendent of schools.
Roll call.
Ms. Malick. Ms. Jarvis.
Four.
Ms. Adrianopoulos.
Four.
Ms. Donovan.
Four.
Ms. Alcieri.
Four.
Ms. Abuskado.
I recuse myself in the vote.
Ms. DeGruel.
Four.
Four. Five. Ms. Vona.
Same.
I refuse to recuse myself.
Why do I have to recuse?
Because I didn't recuse when I spoke to Sean. And that was a mistake. Right, I'm listening.
I vote yes.
Because of your problem.
All right.
Okay, here's, here's, here was the problem. Um, myself, because I have daughters in the system, uh, Joe Abuskado has people working in the system, uh, Ronnie DeGruel has people working in the system, have to recuse himself because of the people they have there. So, we don't get to vote on our new superintendent because of that. And I guess these are the new, the new laws that came in just recently, or they've been here for a while, I guess. Should we? Well, I don't, I'm, I don't remember that, but... Yes, they, they, they contain more detail and more exact...
And they use the word other, to me...
There's a, yeah, it covers a lot more now than it did before.
It was.
A broader sense. Right.
Well, there's five votes, there's...
Yeah, it was, there's five votes, so to the motion carried, um, our new superintendent is with us tonight, Anthony Greco, please stand up. Uh, if you have any, if you have any questions for Mr. Greco, we will have at our next board meeting. We will have Mr. Greco back with his family to do it properly, um...
She, this is, Mr. Vona, this explains it all here, she used to question why we don't have a doctorate necessity. Uh, I'm just explaining, that's why we made a doctorate necessity.
Right.
To cover, to cover, in case we don't have enough votes, because there's certain members of the Board of Education that may have a conflict of interest, we recite the doctorate necessity. So we need five votes to approve, pending approval, this superintendent. So free, if people can't vote, one is on vacation and asked, that's why we reached, they had it every meeting.
Right. So he has been approved, um, Mr. Greco and his family, I guess, will be present at the next board meeting, where you could meet, greet, ask some questions, and then there will be a little something after meeting to welcome him to Linners. Okay, uh, I'm sure he's there, if you want to talk to him and meet him, uh, he, he, he's a pretty nice guy, but that's up to him. Okay, anybody else? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, we got a motion, like, for a second.
For a second.
Can we have a second? All in favor? We are adjourned.